Good evening.
A H C. This is Manny. Just letting you know, I'll be running remotely. Thank you.
Testing, testing.
Testing.
Test, test. All right. I will go ahead and call to order the November 20th meeting of the Vallejo Architectural Heritage and Landmarks Commission. Will all please rise for the Pledge of Allegion? All right, our next item on the agenda is the oath of office for our newly appointed commissioner. Bro, Bro, Berulio, right?
That's correct, and I believe I was sworn in a few hours ago.
Yes, yes. So Dawn has already taken care of this ceremony earlier today. But I'd just like to use this time to let Commissioner Soto introduce himself, tell us a little bit about him himself. So we get to know you.
Yes, hello. So I am an architect here in town. I've been working here for two years. I've been living here for four years. And before that, my career began here in Vallejo. There was, I did my internship back in 2006 with a firm in downtown, which is no longer around. But I've been working in here and around here for, ever since. So glad to be here.
Welcome aboard. Would the secretary like to go ahead and call roll?
Okay, thank you. It's through the chair, yes. Chair McDonald?
Present.
Vice Chair Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Adams?
Here.
Commissioner Riley? Commissioner Soto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Can I have a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda? Commissioner Riley moves. Vice Chair Hall seconds. Tonight will be voting like by show of hands and yea or nay. All in favor and approval of tonight's agenda? Yea.
Aye.
All opposed? The approval of the agenda passes.
Motion passes.
A motion passes. Okay. And then approval of our meeting minutes for March 20th and April 17th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I motion to approve those minutes.
Vice Chair Hall moves and...
I'll second that.
Commissioner Adams seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Did you want to vote on the minutes? Did you want to vote on the minutes, approving the minutes?
Oh, yes.
Yes, we're doing, yeah, raise of hands.
So we have, we have, we have, we have four approvals and one abstention.
One abstention. All right.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, report of the City Council Liaison. I believe that Councilmember Brigenser is unable to attend this evening. Community forum, do we have anyone signed up for community forum this evening?
We'll see if Manny has anyone online to speak.
Through, through the chair, currently do not have any members of the public signed up for the community forum. However, I have a two-minute timer started on my end over here for members of the public who would like to sign up for this item. In the meantime, feel free to carry on with the agenda, and at the conclusion of that timer, if anybody signs up, I'll be sure to let you know.
Great, thank you. So then we'll move forward with tonight's public hearing. This is a resolution to, this is a hearing to adopt a resolution approving a certificate of appropriateness for develop, and development review for a new entry guardhouse and associated roadway fencing and lighting improvements at Turo University.
And through the chair, I'd like to introduce Robert Busek. He's our senior planner here in our planning department, and he'll be presenting the project here tonight.
Thank you. Robert, please go ahead and present.
Good evening, Chair McDonald, members of the commission. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I am Robert Busek, Senior Planner with the City of Vallejo. I have been here just over a year this month, but this is my first presentation to the A H L C. So really excited about this project. Tonight, we have the Turo University Entry Guardhouse. It is a certificate of appropriateness and a development review. Next slide, please. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold a public hearing, to review the project, including the public testimony, and then to take action on the certificate of appropriateness and the development review. Next slide, please. This item is subject to the Levine Act. Are there any commissioners who wish to declare receiving contributions exceeding $500 from any of the parties involved in this proceeding? All right. So moving on. So this project, the project site is located at the northern edge of the 51-acre Turo University campus. This actual guardhouse project is at the intersection of Telos Avenue, which runs approximately, approximately north and south through the campus, and Azuar Drive, which borders the campus on the north side. The site is generally flat and sits approximately 1,500 feet or .3 miles from Mare Island Strait to the east. And then Highway 37 is approximately two and one-quarter miles to the north. Next slide, please. So the bottom photo is a photo of the site looking down Telos Avenue from Azuar Drive. The map on the left side of the screen just shows an overview of the Turo University campus. The campus is comprised of the historic military hospital complex of, which served Mare Island and developed around building H1, which is a classic revival building constructed in 1899. Other structures throughout the campus were constructed mostly in the 1920s and the 1930s to support the medical facility use. These structures consist of a variety of Spanish eclectic and utilitarian-style architecture. Currently, this specific site for the entry guardhouse is a bidirectional street with a landscaped median and a six-foot-tall, non-motorized wrought-iron gate that stretches across both the entry and exit lanes. This site does function as the northern entrance into the Turo University campus and various internal surface parking lot areas. This entrance is located over 100 feet away from the existing, the nearest existing historic building on the campus site. Next slide, please. All right. So the project consists of a request to construct a single-level, 340-square-foot guardhouse with new six-foot-tall wrought-iron fencing on either side of the entrance and a roadway reconfiguration to accommodate two-vehicle entrance lanes with one-vehicle exit lane and a gated pedestrian entryway that is also visible from the guardhouse. Additionally, a bioretention basin is proposed to be installed east of the guardhouse to help manage the additional stormwater runoff from these improvements. The purpose of the project is to provide a controlled point of entry to support efforts to enhance campus security as well as to enhance the entrance of the campus from this northern location. The proposed guardhouse features a modern design incorporating colors and materials consistent with the historic structures within the campus, as you can see in the below photo. Part of the design includes a covered canopy which extends across the vehicle entry lanes as well as the pedestrian access point. And you can see that some lighting is also provided under the canopy. Next slide, please. So this graphic shows the proposed site plan for the guardhouse, with the guardhouse centered in the middle. The guardhouse will be set back approximately 67 feet from the property line along Azuar Drive, which is in alignment with the adjacent historic buildings H73 and H74. Light fixtures are also proposed to be installed, not only the lighting under the canopy, but a couple of additional fixtures on either side of the street to light Telos Avenue both inside the guardhouse, you know, closest to the campus, as well as towards Azuar Drive. These fixtures would be consistent with those installed throughout the university campus, and they include fixtures that combine a historic design with modern functionality. Within the proposal as well, there is just over 1,300 square feet of landscaping, which consists mostly of grasses and other ground cover to fill the bioretention basin, which is located to the right of the guardhouse on the plans on this slide. And inside the median planter area, both in front and behind the proposed guardhouse. Additional plantings will also be added to the existing Turo University Monument sign, which is located in the upper-right portion of the plan in front of you along Azuar Drive. So to accommodate the initial, the additional width necessary for the additional driveways or driveway width and the installation of the bioretention basin required for this, you know, these improvements. Two of the existing mature trees that are alongside Telos Avenue will need to be removed. This includes one plum tree measuring 10 inches in diameter at breast height, or DBH, and one cherry tree measuring 12 inches DBH. There are nine existing mature trees measuring between five and 34 inches DBH and comprised of species including pine, strawberry, laurel, and acacia, which would be retained. So two of the 11 existing trees are proposed to be removed with this project. Next slide, please. Here we can see the proposed elevations for the guardhouse. As you can see, the overall design of the guardhouse is low-profile and modern, which is consistent with, you know, just architecture of the 2020s. The highest point of the structure is 17 feet and 5 inches, and this is at the edge of the canopy over the pedestrian entry, which is to the right of the front north-facing elevation at the top of the screen. The exterior materials are designed to be compatible with the existing historic structures within the Turo University campus. So we have the front north-facing elevation and then the entry side west-facing elevation shown on the screen. And then, next slide, please. This continues where the rear or south-facing portion of the guardhouse is shown at the top of the screen with the exit side or east-facing elevation shown at the bottom. Next slide, please. Here's a material sample board that was included with the project, just showing that the exterior materials used will include lightly textured white plaster, terracotta look concrete, wood look steel, black steel, as well as oxidized steel. As stated previously, these materials are modern, yet consistent with the, the building materials used in many of the historic structures on the site. Also, the light fixtures that were mentioned before are shown particularly, particularly to the right and bottom of the, the board. I'm just showing they are consistent with those that have been installed throughout the university campus with other projects. And they do include fixtures that combine that historic design with the, you know, modern functionality. Next slide, please. Here we have some images of the proposed landscape palette. The landscaping proposed features over 60 grassy shrubs and ground cover plantings, which are split between five species and proposed to be planted within the median, so on the front and the rear side of the guardhouse. The bioretention basin, and then supplementing the existing plantings in the Turo University Monument sign at the very, you know, entrance of the project along Azuar Drive. Next slide. All right. So along with this project, that, you know, the required applications included a certificate of appropriateness. This project has been, you know, staff believes this project meets the certificate of appropriateness findings within Vallejo Municipal Code. This certificate of appropriateness is required by the applicable Mare Island-specific plan that applies to all projects within the, you know, Mare Island Historic District. And particularly in Appendix B1, Section 4.4.1 of that appendix, which then refers back to Vallejo Municipal Code for the specific findings. The Appendix B1 of the Mare Island Specific Plan does outline project guidelines, which are the standards, procedures, regulations, and criteria by which compatible development within the Mare Island Historic District may proceed. Appendix B1 also directs projects to conform with Appendix B4, which are the design guidelines for projects within the Mare Island Historic District. Appendix B4 requires new construction within the Turo University campus to maintain the traditional campus site planning, which includes ensuring that infill and redevelopment projects create enclosed spaces which serve as open space for parks to be enjoyed by students. Preservation of established pedestrian and internal vehicle circulation patterns. Preservation of established, I'm sorry. Maintaining and enhancing existing formal landscape plantings is also a requirement within the design guidelines. This proposal does retain the campus's traditional site planning principles with the main buildings flanked by supporting buildings. Additional fencing and the landscaping do serve to enclose the space and provide screening of the internal surface parking lots that are located adjacent to this, this site. The building materials proposed are inspired by those on the historic buildings, which provides visual consistency, while the proposed building does remain distinctly contemporary to the time period in which it would be constructed, you know, the 2020s. And the guardhouse setback of 67 feet from the property line being aligned with the adjacent H73 and H74 historic buildings also helps to maintain that, the consistency and those principles of the campus site planning that have been established for the university campus. Next slide, please. A historical resources impact assessment was conducted for this particular project. The, you know, this is tied to the, many of the findings in the, the certificate of appropriateness. Findings required for issuing a certificate of appropriateness as well as called out in both of the appendices within the Mare Island Specific Plan. So that consistency with the U.S. Secretary of the Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties, particularly the standards for rehabilitation, which are most appropriate for new construction within historic properties. Julianne Murphy, an architectural historian with Rincon Consultants, did prepare this analysis for the entry guardhouse. This is included as attachment four of the staff report. Of the 10 standards for rehabilitation, only standards nine and 10 really apply to a newly constructed building, since standards one through eight focus on changes being made to existing structures. There is no existing structure that's being modified in this location. So those first eight standards don't apply. Standard nine requires new construction to be differentiated from the old and be compatible with the massing size, scale, and architectural features to protect the historic integrity of the property and its environment. As discussed, the proposed entry guardhouse features a more modern design but incorporates materials used on the adjacent historic structures while also being, you know, single level, much lower than the, I believe the adjacent buildings are, there's a minimum of three or four stories there. Given all of that, the proposal does meet standard nine. Standard 10 requires adjacent new construction, you know, new construction adjacent to historic structures, proper, properties to be undertaken in such a manner that if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and its environment would be unimpaired. This proposed guardhouse is located 100 feet or more from the nearest contributing structure. Therefore, the removal of the facility in the future would not impact the integrity of the historic university campus and satisfies standard 10. This historical resources impact assessment is also required in order to determine that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to SEQA. Next slide, please. So aside from the certificate of appropriateness, because the, the project is a, you know, new structure and includes some, you know, landscaping elements, a development review... and includes some, you know, landscaping elements, a development review is also required as, you know, to approve this, you know, for this project to move forward with construction. Staff analyzed the project against the development review findings in Vallejo Municipal Code Section 16.605.03. Some of those findings do call back to any applicable specific plans, as well as, you know, the general plan. And that brings us back to the Mare Island Specific Plan, Appendix B1 and Appendix B4, which we previously discussed. And staff is, believes that these findings are all met, as well as the standards included in those appendices, you know, as described in the staff report and the resolution. Next slide, please. So of course, there is a CEQA determination that is also required along with these proposals. Looking at the proposal, staff believes that the determination could be made that the project is exempt under the following CEQA guidelines. Section 15301 for existing facilities, as this includes alterations to Taylor's Avenue, which is an existing street for, you know, public safety purposes. Section 15303 is a categorical exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. The proposal is, includes the construction of a new 340-square-foot guardhouse, which is a small structure. And Section 15331 is an exemption for historic resource restoration or rehabilitation. And, you know, the project is consistent with Secretary of the Interior standards and will support operation of the university in rehabilitating and preserving the historic Mare Island Hospital campus. Next slide, please. A public notification was provided with these applications prior to this hearing pursuant to Vallejo Municipal Code. Notice of this hearing was published in the Times Herald and mailed to all active neighborhood groups and property owners within 500 feet of the subject property on November 6, 2025. And as you can see, that the, due to the large parcel sizes in this area, that did cover most of the Mare Island area, the 500 feet from the project boundaries. This notice was also electronically mailed to members of the AHLC and the applicant. As of right now, staff has not received any comments or questions from the public regarding this application. Next slide, please. This brings us to the recommended actions. The first recommended action is to, you know, based on the analysis contained in the staff report, staff recommends that the AHLC find the project exempt from environmental review due to the, you know, the exemptions previously cited. And to approve certificate of appropriateness, COA 24-0004, and Development Review, DVR 24-0029, based on the findings as provided in the attached resolution. Next slide, please. That brings me to the end of my presentation. I do believe Jennifer Leviscu, or somebody representing Twin Steps Architecture, who is the applicant, may have joined online. And it looks like we have Edgar Maxian of, representing Turo University here in person. So either of us can answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
All right, let's see. Robbie, just remind me, I think our next step is we, we can ask staff for questions and then we can ask if the applicant wants to address us, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question. Has the fire marshal seen these plans? I'm curious as to the height of the canopy and what setting it. Is it for the fire apparatus to pass through?
Yes. Chair McDonald, Commissioner Soto, as part of the application review process, these, this project was routed to the fire department, who did, you know, review the project and provided some, you know, conditions of approval. So they did ultimately find the project met their standards or were confident that moving forward to the construction permit phase, that their conditions would be, you know, would be able to be implemented into the construction plans and be satisfied. So they will also review the construction plans should the project be approved.
Follow-up question. So this is going towards sort of what's hitting the height of the canopy, making sure that it doesn't grow any taller. And so the follow-up question is, how is the roof drainage of the canopy working out? In the elevations, it seems to be flat in the side elevations. However, in the roof plan, the drainage seems to be coming in at a 40, not completely down with the slope. So is the intent for the roof pitch butterfly to come up and sort of be angled up at some point? I'm not sure if that, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Do we have anyone from Twin Steps Architecture on the line?
Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Oh, hi, sorry. Hi, thank you so much. To answer your question regarding the roof drainage, so yes, the butterfly is, is flat in elevation, however, there is an internal gutter in the center. And the, it's a two-piece gutter, so the interior of the gutter is sloping towards the rear of the, of the structure.
So the roof deck opens up in the middle to allow the gutter, to everything drain towards the gutter, and the gutter's the element of the drainage system that slopes?
Correct. Yep. So the interior of the gutter, the bottom of the gutter slopes back.
Okay.
Commissioner Riley.
So I have a question about the reason for this. Has there been any incidents of any kind that warrant a guardhouse on the, on a base where guardhouses have gone away completely since the, since the shipyard closed?
Chair McDonald, Commissioner Riley, I will ask a representative of Turo University to come up and speak to kind of some of the operations there.
Hello, I'm Newman Hoffman, I'm the CEO for Turo University California, Chairman McDonald, and Commissioner Riley, thank you for the question. I appreciate the opportunity to have this program, this project reviewed. We've had this in the works for a little while now, and so we're excited to see it at this stage. We have not thankfully had any significant security issues at our campus in recent years. Unfortunately, in the reality that we live in as a university and any educational institution, we do have concerns about safety long-term, you know, and there's been incidents at other colleges and universities, both in the state of California and elsewhere. And so for that reason, this is part of a larger security effort for our campus, including some fencing that we are going to propose at a later date and, and other items as well. We've upgraded security cameras on the campus, our access control system and otherwise. So this is part of just a general effort to deal with the unfortunate realities that many university campuses deal with in the world. So we have not thankfully had that, in part because we are on Mare Island and a little bit remote, but especially given the history of other incidents on other campuses, we feel it's important to have reasonable security measures.
So not to give away too much about the campus, but are you gonna, there are other ways onto it. Are you, are you putting on the east and west? Are you blocking them off or doing anything like that?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, there is a plan, and we will, at the appropriate time, raise that with the commission, but to add fencing around the entire, outside of the campus.
The only way in and out will be through this, this north, north entrance?
Yeah, so there's gonna be many phases, but yes, essentially, the majority of the traffic, especially for about two-thirds of the campus, will go through this gate and then out through a single exit, so it's one way in, one way out. There's of course, exit in the event of emergency, you know, and that's what, there's multiple pathways to do so. But yes, the intention is to really control the entryways into campus. Right now, anyone can just walk onto the campus and unfortunately, just something that is not well-advised by security consultants and otherwise.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can, can we go, if there are any other questions, could we go back just for a moment to the elevation, maybe the elevation as you enter the campus?
Yes.
From Azure.
I believe there's a rendering on slide six. Or would you like these elevations?
Do you have the other eleva, there you go. So one thing that would be great, I know, I find myself frequently asking for this when we look at homes in a residential neighborhood context, would be for these elevations to be extended to show the context of the other buildings. So in the case of this building with its 17-foot maximum height, you know, I found it helpful to pull up the street view of the entrance to the campus and see this structure, you know, imagine this structure in its context to the, what I think may eventually be a residential wing to the one side, and then, I'm not sure, there's I think a utility building to the other side. But it would just be nice, I mean, I'm not, I'm not insisting on it this evening because I think I can visualize it, but it would just be nice to see these in context of the adjacent buildings with a longer elevation. And like if this were scaled out, even if this were just photoshopped into an expanded street view, so you could see this structure in the context of the two buildings that will be to either side. Does that make sense?
Chair McDonald, members of the commission, yes, that makes sense. And some of the other graphics somewhat get to that, but that's something we can definitely have that, like in certain views, have those items provided.
Even if it's just, even if it's just a line drawing that just shows, you know, these are the scales of the adjacent buildings and things like that. I do also wonder, in this case, the, the trees that are being removed are on, as you, as you come into the campus, the trees that are being removed will be on the left side. I'm also not certain, and maybe there's already a graphic that illustrates this, the adjacency of the canopy, because I think the high side of the canopy is on the side where the majority of the existing trees will remain. How exactly does the structure sit in adjacent to that grouping of trees?
So we do have a, Chair McDonald, members of the commission, there is a rendering on, Manny, if we could pull up slide six. Or the project description slide. So there's some renderings of the, the trees shown for the entrance. Now those are, you know, I think they tried their best to match the, the species of tree out there.
Okay.
Of course, every tree is different. I, we can take a look at slide seven, the proposed site plan, that does show the existing trees and their canopy, and does, I believe, a better job of representing the actual dimensions that are out there. And then, if a represent, I believe Jennifer, if you're on the line, if you could
Yep.
speak to how the trees were considered?
Well, and specifically, specifically that the trees in the street view, which again, I don't know when the street view photo was taken, that the streets on, the trees on that side where the canopy overhangs the sidewalk slightly, seem like they'd have to be pruned up quite a bit to clear the canopy the way it's depicted in that rendering.
So the trees do need to be pruned, just in general. I think one of the sort of larger overhanging tree, or the tree that hangs over the most is past the guardhouse, so that one won't be adjacent to, to our structure. But the, the other ones that are more towards the public side of the, of this parcel will be pruned back. However, the highest branches are pretty high up. I think that light pole that's there, I'm not sure exactly how high that is, but I don't, I think that might be even higher than our, like the, the high part of the light pole is higher than our structure. But we could do, we could go and take some measurements and include that in that section that you've requested.
I mean, I think that, actually, I think that when you went to slide six, I think there's a reasonable representation there of the building in the context of the other buildings. And I, I'm not asking that you follow up with the extended elevation, I'm just trying to suggest that when you bring these things forward, even just a nice site section showing the buildings and things would be helpful, because when we evaluate height, oftentimes we're just shown a picture of only the structure that we're considering, and it's very hard to, to evaluate that out of context of the other buildings. So I don't, I don't, I'm not, at least I'm not asking for a site section, I just think they would be helpful in general. But I, I now see, I see that the tree that is fuller at that lower height is well forward of the, the proposed guard station, and that the trees that are further back are fairly representative of the trees that are in the rendering. So I do have one other question. Because of the removal of the existing median that comes all the way up to Azure, the, the existing double-headed cobra head that gets removed, seems like it provides a fair amount of the roadway lighting at that point, because there do not seem to be any roadway lights along the other side where there's the chain-link fence and the lay-down, or just the, the work yard. So I see one additional roadway luminaire being added over by the monument sign. I see the existing one depicted. I'm, I'm just wondering if you've considered the impact on the intersection and any pedestrian activity crossing that intersection with the removal of the double cobra head?
Chair McDonald.
So, yes, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Jennifer.
So, yes, we added that extra fixture to what is planned right in this to help with that. And then we also have some lighting on the underside of the canopy that will help illuminate the roadway there as cars enter. Regarding the actual crosswalk area, there is another fixture, basically where that turnout is to the north in this image. That gives quite a bit of throw. But we could consider also adding another similar fixture on the left-hand side of the, of the roadway, mirroring the one we have, the new one we've added to the right by the monument sign. And.
Yeah, I'm probably less concerned about the, I'm probably less concerned about traffic once it turns off the main road. I, I think it may just be, I mean, I, I know it's not really our jurisdiction as this commission, I just can't not comment that if part of this is about a security upgrade, making sure that the traffic coming across there can see pedestrians with the removal of those, the two of the, the, the removal of that taller. can see pedestrians with the removal of those, the two of the, the removal of that taller luminaire that currently sits where the median strip comes all the way forward. So, it might just be something to have, like, just a suggestion, you might have the security consultant look at it, because you do have vehicles entering traffic there.
Chair McDonald, members of the commission, definitely. And as part of this review process, there were extensive discussions with the Public Works Departments, both the Engineering Division and the Traffic Engineer, regarding particularly improvements focused on pedestrian connectivity as part of this project, which includes, you know, extending the sidewalk from its current terminus further west of the, you know, the project area that was shown on the previous site plan, but just to connect some of those, the gaps in that coverage. And then, as such, to the, you know, Public Works Department will be reviewing those, you know, construction documents associated with, you know, the roadway improvements. And then, and part of that also includes the street lighting and ensuring that it meets the, you know, the adopted standards there.
Commissioner Riley?
On the question of lighting, I was happy to see and report the use of ballard lighting, which makes so much sense. As for the cobra lights, to me, they're, they need to be shielded, frankly. The ones that, and I encourage you in the lighting to have lights that cast light downward rather than sideways. Mare Island continues to get lit up more and more and more, beginning to look like a shipyard again some days. But to the extent you can use that type of lighting that lights up just what you're trying to light up as opposed to the entire environment, that's great.
Any other questions?
Just one last comment. I assume this encircling of this great piece of naval history isn't going to interfere with historic tourism, of people who want to see the hospital grounds and that kind of thing. I mean, that's going on right now. You don't envision that shrinking any, do you, Newman?
Thank you for the question. We take very seriously our obligation to maintain this property and to have it available for future generations. That's part of our obligations here at the island. We do have tours still that happen from time to time. I don't see that changing. And we just ask, you know, just like any private property, although this one has a significant historic significance, just that folks let us know, but we often have people come by and do tours. And we've had organized tours as well as just ad hoc people asking if they could come and see, even folks that have worked on the island. We had a 90, I think, 99-year-old nurse who came on the island a few years ago, she was 99 at the time, and she told the story of how she had met her husband, who she, they had a policy, they weren't allowed to date any of the soldiers or the nurses, but they, she promised him a date if the bullet that was in his heart was removed. And so she thought, there's no way this is going to happen. But it was a very special moment, you know, so they ended up removing the bullet and he lived, and so they ended up getting married. But stories like that, it's a special, you know, the history of that place and the fact of be educating the next generation of nurses and doctors, you know, to connect back to that is important to us. So, in short, yes, we will continue those, that availability.
Do we have any additional questions for the applicant? And Robbie, which comes next? Forgive me, it's just late. Do we do, do we next do deliberations, or do we do public comment?
Yeah, you would open it up for public comment.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment. Do we have anyone online wishing to comment?
Through the chair, currently do not have any members of the public with their hand raised to speak on this item, and I do not see any members of the public signed up to speak on this item in person.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing. Is there any deliberation or any items that commissioners would like to discuss?
I had a question about the materiality of, that's being proposed. I saw on the elevations, it's noted that terracotta tile, but it also seems that it could be simulated terracotta finish. And I just want to make sure that, which is being proposed. And there's also a material of Corten steel, and I didn't see that being applied in the elevations. So if we get some clarification on what's being proposed.
Of course. Jennifer, do you?
Yeah. So the terracotta tile is a baked product, so it is similar to terracotta, like, traditional terracotta. However, it's not, it's more of like a stained cement kind of tile, but simulating terracotta. And then, the Corten steel, I believe we were thinking about using it in some of the planter areas as edging. So not quite visible in the images, but some of the edging for specifically the rear planters, we were going to use some of the Corten.
And lastly, what was the inspiration for the simulated wood finish for the underside of the canopy?
I think we just wanted to bring some warmth to the project, because it does have, you know, the exposed steel and the concrete finishes, so we wanted to bring a little bit of warmth to the project.
But this material isn't necessarily found in the structures nearby. Is that correct?
It is not correct.
Any other questions or any items that commissioners would like to deliberate on? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm going to motion to approve unless I don't have the certificate number.
Okay. Commissioner Riley has moved that we approve COA 240004 and Development Review 240029 as submitted. Does anyone like to second? Commissioner Adams, seconds. We'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, just aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay.
Commissioner Soto, I just want to, I want to confirm that you're opposed to the motion?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And I do too. I'm trying to proceed buttons.
Oh, we're not doing the, we're not
We're doing it by hand.
Okay. So, so let's just do ayes. So all in favor of approving the project as submitted? Aye. Okay, we have three. All opposed? Say nay. Okay, we have two.
Okay, so we have three ayes and two noes. The motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone who came out to present this evening. Well, I don't need to do anything else. I mean, Robbie, do I need to do anything to close out that item?
No, the item's now approved.
Okay. All right. So then we'll move on to written communications. I don't believe that we have any written communications this evening.
We do not have any additional written communications at this time.
All right. And report of the secretary?
Yes, I just have a few items just to cover real quick. Thank you. I will mention first off that on our agenda tonight, there was a couple of misspellings in the agenda. And I know that this came up before previously, and we had corrected those errors. And then what happened was, when we went to create the template agenda again in our system, it reverted back to the old template language, and we didn't catch that until after it was published. So we will get that fixed permanently, and that way it won't happen again in the future, but just wanted to mention that. The other thing was that we do have planned a future hearing in December, so that would be December 18th. We anticipate having one item, I believe, on the agenda, a certificate of appropriateness at 602 Georgia. So that will be coming forward for your consideration. And then, lastly, just wanted again, welcome, Commissioner Soto, and thanks for coming on board. We're happy to have you and looking forward to having you at our future hearing. So that concludes my report.
Just, is there, I know we typically have standing agenda items for updates on things like Herbert House and the flagpole. Are there any updates as part of the secretary's report for those standing items?
There hasn't been any updates on any of those items that we had previously talked about. But if there's any updates at the next hearing, I'm happy to cover those and give an update, but nothing at this time.
Okay. So on the flagpole, the, there is, just to remind commissioners and to bring Commissioner Soto up to speed, there was a historic flagpole that was removed at Mare Island in the park across from where the historical museum is. There were the bands, the bandshell, or the, I don't know, you call it bandshell, a gazebo. And it was severely deteriorated, and it was placed into storage. I believe there's a proposal for repair or replacement. Is that proposal still under review?
I haven't been made aware of any updates on that.
Okay.
So, but I can get some information and present it at the next hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I ask only because it came up in my, like, my Google photo feed of where were you. And there were photos of the day that Brandon and I went out when they removed the flagpole. A city attorney is not here this evening to report. Is there, are there any members of the commission wishing to report? Commissioner Riley?
So I got a couple of things. One, on the Herbert House, I just, I contacted Gillian Hayne, our Assistant City Manager, today, just to see if, as of September, a deadline came and went with no applicants, nobody bidding on the place to either lease it or to buy it and move it. And so at that point, Peter Brigenter, Councilmember Brigenter, said, let's go ahead and sell it, you know, on the land and the building. And so I wrote, actually wrote a column about it. So Gillian says she's moving ahead with that, except kind of overwhelmed in the City Hall. But she says that the next step is to declare surplus property. And I guess there's a couple of other buildings that would be surplus property. And she is hopeful of getting that on the first quarter of next calendar year going. And once, if it gets that far, when it does get that far, then it could go on the market, hopefully.
And so you were saying surplus property?
That status is needed before they can
Okay.
put it up for sale.
Okay. It was just that when you look at Robbie and turn away from the mic, it was like, property. And I just want to make sure, clarify it was surplus property. Okay.
And then, just one other thing to the, I'm on the Mare Island Historic Park Foundation, and they, I was approached, Quarters A, the commandant's, the best of the mansions, the commandant's mansion, they want to put ramp access on it. And they floated this one proposal, which would have the ramp in front. And I, I, it's not speaking for everybody here, but I said my own perspective on it is, you ought to put it, if you're going to put one on it, put it in the back. It would really take away from the street view of that great old building. And so the ramp in front was just one of other alter. Nothing solid yet, but they do plan to put some kind of access. And they did put it on the, you know, on the Quarters Coffee Shop. They put a small one in the back, can't see it from the street, barely at all. And that's the way to do it, I personally think.
Is there parking at the back of Quarters A?
There is not.
There isn't? Okay. I was going to wonder, because, you know, in terms of, you know, equal amenities for people who need the ramp or anything, that if there were parking in the back, there could actually also be designated accessible parking and an appropriately graded sidewalk and things like that, because I think now there isn't really even an accessible curb cut in front of the building for anyone who is using a wheelchair.
Yeah. But the, I went through all the interior standards on it, and the historical value gets at least equal footing with
With the ADA.
with access that would change the appearance of the building. And so, and there's nothing wrong in the standards for providing access that's just a touch harder to get to. You know, there's sidewalks, wheelchairs can be rolled, and it can be, and they don't have to be up, you know, front and center. That's it.
All right. Commissioner Adams, do you have anything? Nope. Okay. And then, let's see, ad hoc subcommittees. Do we have any updates on, do we do any updates on where we got with the documentation? We didn't end up scanning, right?
No, we haven't scanned yet, but we're waiting for the scanner, right?
Okay. I don't know, I think, I was waiting on the dimensions of the book.
Okay, so
We just haven't met in a while.
I don't know if you can hear me. Could you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, for now, I will say that I did speak with them, actually, this was just in the public, believe it or not. And it was mentioned that they found some other documents that we might be interested in. It was some arrow views of the city. And I want to say, he said there were 17 of those. We're still waiting for Paul, our, the museum curator, to give the yay, to bring things over. But the spot and everything is there for us. We have, we're just waiting for him to say, just have the water department bring everything over, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
But everything's been okay.
And then we'll figure out whether we need a camera or a scanner, or
Right, right. But I know it's going to be, I think it was three feet, or was it 32 inches? Because I gave you some measurements. I gave someone some measurements. And if we look at the, some old dialogue, it was that, that was the height, because I did get that from
Okay.
from Paul.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's still a go. So we're just waiting. That's all.
Okay.
That's all.
Commissioner Riley?
So for our new board member, this, I don't know if, this water record that they have is so valuable, it's a way of determining when a, when a house was built. The day they turned on the water is basically the day the house was, construction was finished. Very useful document in trying to run down timeframe for homes, historic homes.
And it's every, every home here in Vallejo, okay. And not only that, it also, so say for instance, the home was built, say, in, I don't know, 1800, I'm just going to throw that out there. And, but the water line was put in at 1850. That's, there's still, like, what is that, like, 50 years, that 50-year gap is still there. You know what I mean? So that part's interesting, too. I mean, you get to the whole history behind the house, the water, the water put, placed in, and so forth and so on, so. Yeah. And then, if when you look at the ledgers, oh my God.
Yeah.
They were like, you didn't want to look at them, because they were just so delicate.
Yeah, and they're just these very delicate books
Yeah.
that have just been kicking around in various departments for years. So the, one of the subcommittees is about documentation archiving, and so
In preservation.
one of the goals is to get the books somewhere where they're safe.
Yes.
And then, once they're in a place where they're not just on top of somebody's file cabinet
Or in a drawer.
then they get scanned with the hope that eventually the images could be hosted somewhere that they can be browsed by people hoping to establish a date for their home, so they don't have to constantly be going through these fragile documents.
Am I part of a subcommittee yet, or is that still in the works?
We should probably revisit, since the question is, is he automatically assigned to a subcommittee? So I think we probably should, maybe, could we agendize at the December meeting to go through and review what our subcommittees were and who was assigned to each of them, and how they stand now?
Yeah, I think we can go ahead and, we can vote to add that to the next agenda.
Okay. We don't need to vote on that, do we? Can, I just ask?
I would, just to be safe, I would put it to a vote.
Okay, all right. So would someone like to So would someone like to make a motion that at the next meeting, we review our various ad hoc subcommittees and confirm their continued existence and their staffing plan?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so moved. Anyone would like to second?
I will second.
And seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Sounds good. We will do that.
If there are any other items, I'll go ahead and adjourn the November 20th meeting of the Valeo Architectural Heritage and Landmarks Commission. Thank you, everyone.